What do you, we'll call the meeting order. Uh, so. First, ladies and.
Yeah, everybody. United States of America. And in the very public office today. Cooperation. Individual. Liberty.
We will have all, all. Yes.
Commissioner Carberry here. Commissioner Layton here. Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Teney. Here. Commissioner Irons is excused. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commission Chair Burici.
Here.
Yep, that's you. Next one back.
Geez.
You're gonna share back the. Okay, uh, the different events have to read the minutes. Um, April seventeenth.
The news.
More. Uh, was there any? Discussion or any issues found in the, in the minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I am with your group minutes.
Uh, the motions.
Second.
Okay, motion second to third minutes from April seventeen twenty twenty four. Keep it consistent.
Commissioner Carberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Teney.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commission Chair Burici.
Yes.
They should be on. Do the buttons need to be up maybe?
Uh, some buttons.
Yeah, I think they're just, they're either on or not on, but I understand it, so.
Okay, uh, public hearing, this is next, and then we'll, we'll discussion items, and then post comments. Uh, we've got a lot to get through. Tonight. Uh. Uh, just to reiterate, we'll be going over the specifics, but if you like the socks, and make sure you're writing them down. Uh, check the city staff. Uh, we'll keep. Comments fairly tight tonight, if you have the comments, trying to give a decisive point, if you have, uh, dishes, uh, pretty. Uh, from someone else, I guess, if you just abstained. If you give me a, a sign, you agree, with the thumbs up, and we'll just move on from there. Uh, you've got three, three public meetings to get through tonight, so. It'd be lovely to see every once in a while, it'd be done by nine o'clock, okay? Or soon. Whatever's. Okay, we're going to continue the public hearing on. As you permit, COP two four dash zero 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 zero. Uh, it's called order. The city of Boardman is the owner applicant, probably describes portions of Redwood North Main Street, Boardman Avenue, designed commercial, towards commercial and residential. Request is to install the traffic signal, being required, more instance, released to Boardman Avenue between the northeast and northwest first streets. Like I said, the whole no reconstruction, side lane, there have been better. Storm drainage improvements and on-street parking. Material for ruler found at the BDC chapter two point two. Commercial and chapter four point four condition is permits is being processed in a type three decision. As we are here. For the content of this hearing, the public hearing, uh, we see that we took as follows. We'll start with the staff report. Then we'll move on to testimony. Uh, for the applicants. And any testimony in support of the application. Any testimony on closing the application, then any neutral testimony, and then any applicant who waddled. If they're in the same convention. After that, we will then close the public testimony after the record is closed for testimony, and no other testimony will be heard, unless the planning commission has a specific question. Planning commission may ask questions of staff, which planning commission will discuss the matter and make a decision. The planning commission may make a fine decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matters continue, this will be the only notice of that time and date being overseen. The testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form submitted to the associate plan. My left. And we'll recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me, please state both your name and address for the record when kind of the podium, for the time only is completed. Uh. Uh, please keep testimony concise to a point, testimony should be on actual consideration and, uh, address the substantial criteria. And again, we're gonna try and link to about five minutes if we can. And we'll just kind of play it there. The criteria that apply to decision are listed in the staff report, testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. There's raised an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and party to build to respond to the issue, private appeals and land use for appeals, we move up, based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise a constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue, or as a lawsuit in circuit court on. Now, I ask members of planning mission to disclose any export aid contacts, bias, or conflicts, indicate the nature and extent of the export aid contacts, bias, conflicts, and indicate whether you would intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none, does anyone in the audience wish to challenge and plant a mission to impart reality? Hearing none, we'll move to the staff report.
Perfect, thank you. So, um, based on testimony and planning commission deliberation last month, uh, we did go back, we had a, a couple way of meeting with ODOT folks. Um, Kildson, who drafted the main street assessment report, um, and city staff. We've amended the staff report a bit, we've made some changes. Um. And, uh, since I think all of you were here last month and heard that, I'm not gonna reiterate it, it, in its entirety, but I'll do enough to get Jennifer up to speed. Um, and then, uh, kind of focus on what the changes are. So again, the original proposal was for a street light, a traffic signal light at the corner of Boardman and Main. Um, changes to Boardman Avenue, one block west and about a block and a half to the east. Um, not all of those changes to the east were shown on the diagram, uh, uh, but we're gonna extend the, the angle working further than the diagram shows, as well as, um, some sidewalk improvements, uh, to benefit the school district. The changes to that, uh, proposal, and again, the proposal also included converting the, uh, main street, excuse me, the front streets intersections there with Main on the north side to a right-in, right-out configuration. What has changed is that we're gonna delay the traffic light. And I say delay, because we still believe that it will kind of point in time when, um, there will be full, full warrants for that beyond just the safety warrants. And replace it with a HAWK. Um, HAWK stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. So it's not much different than what we currently have with the RRFB, which is Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. The primary difference between, uh, an RRFB and a HAWK. Is that an RRFB, just simply, when you push the button, it activates. So if pedestrians are a continual flow. And they keep pushing the button, it will keep flashing and stop traffic, and that's where we get the, 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 the concern of that traffic backing up, particularly to the south and potentially, um, having impacts to the westbound off-ramp. The HAWK is just a smarter device, I don't know how else to explain it other than to just say it, it appears to be a smarter device. Because it will, it will say, its brain will tell it that, uh, I've been flashing for a really long time, and I probably need to stop flashing to allow traffic to move. So it'll actually stop the pedestrians and let the, the traffic move, and then it will re-trigger, if somebody pushes the button, it'll say, okay, now we'll let, we'll let, um, pedestrians go. So it has a, uh, a more sophisticated spacing or timing system, rather than just the simple RRFB, which just responds to the person pushing the button. That's really the only change we're proposing from the staff side. Um, we are maintaining the right-in, right-out on Front Street. And if you, uh, take a look at the staff report, um, there's a couple of items that we've done in red text, um, for you, and then there's some text that is in italics. So the red text is a change to the current text, the italics is new text. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive you to the second page of the staff report, about halfway down. And this is new text. It starts off with just simply a statement of last month's, um, conversation, uh, and then I define what a HAWK signal is in the staff report and why they are helpful. And then I give you some numbered points for why we are maintaining the conversion of front streets, uh, that front street intersection to a right-in, right-out configuration. Specifically, and this is why you received both the IMP as an attachment to this document, as well as the full Kiddleson report, so that you could see the reasoning why the city is not, not making a change to that, um, requirement. Uh, the city's level of service standard is a C. Now, that's higher than ODOT standard. Um, but it is the standard that is adopted and is identified in the IMP. So again, as a reminder of what level of service means. Level of service, think of, think, level of service goes between an A and, and. F. A, B, C, D, E, F. So unlike grades in school, they've added E. But otherwise, it means the same thing, A is, hey, you're going really good, you're getting the intersection and moving, you're probably not have a lot of stopping. There's not a lot of traffic slowing you down. F, the intersection has failed. And C is, well, it's working, but the delay is noticeable. And D is, well, it's working, but the delay is frustrating, and we need to figure out what to do about it. So, when the city adopted the IMP, they determined that the level of standard for, for improvements or changes would be C. So, I think that's the first important thing to recognize, is that's the standard the city has set. The, um. The IMP also talks about access points and what happens with access points, and what it means to reduce those access points. So, conversion of front to a right-in, right-out is, is improving the ability for, for access to happen along Main and other locations. I think, going back to level of service, my point three is that at the time that Main Street IMP was adopted, the levels of service for Main Street and North Front Street was a C. Which means it was at the point where it was already concerning. Today, it's at a D. So based on our own city standard that we adopted, we are required to address that level of service of a D. And the mechanism that the IMP identifies to address that level of service D is to convert front streets to a right-in, right-out. Um, it also, uh, identifies that the city is to work towards two items, the first being development of the local street network, both east and west of Main Street, and second, to limit access at Main Street of both north and south front streets. The first step of this is to limit those intersections to right turn only. So. To be an equal, equal opportunity right-in, right-out, um, imposer. Uh, on the north side of the, of the interchange, we have the loop roads in place, they've been in place for a really long time. It is, it is how you make that loop around those blocks to both the east and the west. So it's, it's Boardman Avenue, it's first on both sides, and it's front streets, and those are the loops, and that's how you make your way around there. On the south side, we do not yet have those loops installed, we are working on that, and this summer, we will be installing the loop road on the southeast quadrant. And when the Silver Garden motel complex, um, comes in and triggers their development, we will work with them and complete the loop on the southwest quadrant. And at the point in time those are completed, south front streets will also become a right-in, right-out. Because it is already functioning at a level of service D. And that is what you see when you look at the Kiddleson report, it's doing that analysis and has identified that both of those intersections are functioning at a level of service D. So by our own adopted IMP. We have, uh, we have a requirement to meet the standards that it imposes, and that is to convert front street to right-in, right-out. Now, it does require that you have the ability to do to do the loops, and we don't yet have that on the south side, but as soon as we do, we're gonna have to address that concern, but they're there on the north side. Some folks have asked questions about the access spacing standards and why there's such a difference in spacing on the south side of the freeway versus the north side of the freeway. The IMP also provides a variance for the ODOT standard access spacing from an interchange of thirteen hundred and twenty feet. So we have the same situation at the Port Memorial Interchange, that where the loop roads are on the south side of the Port Memorial Interchange, they're not at thirteen hundred and twenty feet, the north side of the Main Street interchange is not at thirteen hundred and twenty feet, and Oregon Trail is close, but not exactly thirteen hundred and twenty feet. So. That's what ODOT is looking for, is that distance of thirteen hundred and twenty feet. In all of these cases, they looked at that and said why we can't or can't meet that, and have provided a variance to meet it in a different way. So on Main Street on the north side, it is Boardman Avenue, where you can have that first left-hand full intersection. So Boardman and Main is where you get your first full intersection. On the south side, once the loop roads are installed, that first full intersection will be at Oregon Trail Boulevard. So it's a significant difference in, in length, but that's because when we did the Main Street IMP in two thousand and nine, most of this environment was built. And so we made, we made work what we had. Um, BPA power lines are an impact, they're certainly the impact on the, on the Port of Moro interchange, but these are the standards that are established in those interchange area management plans. Um, so we've not, uh, further in the staff report, we made some changes to where we were talking about, um, uh, replacing the street light with HAWK signal, but for the most part, the rest of the staff report just has those amendments to it. Um, and then we identified, um, the additional comments received from the folks who made testimony, uh, on the last page. Um, so again, we did attach to your packet the full Kiddleson report. Because I think it's important, there are a couple of pages in the appendices of that, that show you where those level of service, um, factors are at, and I'm happy to walk you through and show you where those are at. We also have Matt Hugard on tonight with Kiddleson, and he can, he can walk you through his assessment and tell you where those specific parts and pieces are. And then, um. We also included the IMP, because that is where the standards are at, that is what is applied, and that is what is applicable. So I'm happy to answer your questions, we have on the, on Zoom tonight, we have three ODOT representatives, we have Paul Howland, we have Teresa Penninger, and Ken Patterson. Um, if you have questions for them, uh, they're here to try to answer those questions to the best of their ability. Um, both, again, Matt is here, he's with Kiddleson, he's the author of the Main Street Assessment Report that the city had, um, done, he was here last time, answered a couple of questions, but if there are additional questions, he's here. And then Mike Lee, who's the city engineer, is also available for questions. So, um, I'm gonna pause and just ask Mike, do you have anything that you would want to add? Um, to the staff report as a staff member?
Yes, this is Mike, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, um, one thing that I don't think got addressed is the, there was revisions to the center median as well. Uh, the previous staff report, right, excuse me, staff report had a center median going from uh, the intersection of Boardman Avenue and Main all the way through to the interchange now. Uh, that's been revised to allow for attorney movements to occur into and out of, um, both the Sinclair and the Chevron. So I, that was one thing that I, I thought should be noted.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so. So the, um, Mike, are you, where you could cha, share your, share screen and pull up the, the schematic?
No, I'm not. I.
Okay. So in your, in your staff report, this page here.
Yeah.
Is there any? Uh.
Yeah.
Yes, page twenty-one, thank you. So you'll notice that, um. He has, he has enlarged the, the barrier. Um, that's gonna create the, the front streets being right-in, right-out. But north of that, about, oh, probably about even with the north side of the Chevron building. Um, that median stops. So there will be an allowance, and you'll see they've kind of dashed that yellow line through there, there will be an allowance for left-hand turns into both on the C and D side and Chevron side, they'll be able to make left hands out to go south. And for, um, the Sinclair folks will be able to make a left turn in. And again, it, this, this works because we don't have a stoplight, and we won't have a specific stopping and queuing issue. The light will be a HAWK, and it will be triggered by the pedestrian traffic. So, um. The, the, just to be clear, we're, we're fairly confident that we're not that far from the light, we're still gonna put the infrastructure in for the light. Um, so that at the point in time the light is needed, that infrastructure is there, it's pretty substantial infrastructure to put in.
That was my, that was one of my questions, is that gonna go towards future lights?
Right, so, so, um, yeah, we're, the, the. To do the two poles as opposed to the four poles, the hole that we have to dig to put that, that foundation in for those light structures is pretty significant and pretty deep. So we're gonna ahead and do that at this point in time, because we're gonna have everything ripped up. So we're gonna install it as though we were putting in the light, but what will be attached to it will be the HAWK. And that's what's gonna function.
Right, wouldn't that barrier, when the light eventually goes in, obviously it will at some point. The barrier gets longer?
Yeah, that, the median will.
Right now, even with it where it's at, that makes it still for a short section, you turn that, you know, very little car, room for cars.
Yeah.
So if, if the barrier gets longer.
There's, there's probably about, for the, for folks turning into Sinclair, there's probably stacking for one, maybe two cars in there, would be my guess.
Yep.
So again, without an actual street light.
Right, when the street light comes.
When the street light comes, that barrier will, we'll, we're gonna go back to that conversation about the barrier, yep, about the median being there. So it'd be, if you, if you shop in Hermison much, and you go to the intersection where McDonald's and Starbucks is. When you get into the queue to turn, to make the, if you're going north, and you wanna turn left to go left on Elm. You can do that, but if you wanna make a left to go into Starbucks, you can't, you gotta go around the block to go into Starbucks. You've driven it, right, Jamie?
I did, I thought, I thought they're.
You're saying it, okay. I don't know.
But the difference is, the difference is there, they have plenty of room for cars to be in a left-hand turn lane, I mean, you can, you can take that line all the way back. Here, here, if we have to move the barrier up when the light gets put in, we'll have, we'll have room for one or two cars at the light.
So the barrier would be modified, at the point in time that the light went in, that barrier would be modified, but a median would be placed there.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is a schematic, we've, we've done, we've done the planning level work, we've not done the design level work, so we don't have a clear understanding yet of what, how that median's gonna look, or how it's gonna be built. We just know that we need to make sure that traffic can't be making that left-hand turn, and I think one of the concerns that we also have at that intersection is how vehicles come off of the westbound off-ramp. And make a right and an immediate left, and it can be a very dangerous train movement. Um, so this is gonna push that train movement further to the north, whether it's into the actual left into Sinclair, or a left at Boardman Avenue.
Hey Carla, another, another point there is that we're maintaining the crosswalk at Front Street. And Main Street. And so the, uh, the median there acts as a refuge for pedestrians. And, um, and so that's more reason why that median is shaped the way it is.
Okay.
Um, I got a couple, couple questions, kind of barrage a little bit. Uh, do you know the estimated cost of the HAWK?
I don't, off the top of my head, Mike's been working on the design piece, he might have a better sense, Mike, costs?
And let me, let me clarify this, so what I'm wondering is, what, what is the initial cost? What is the timeframe between when they think an actual traffic signal will be needed, and what's the cost differential from the stone HAWK? Versus upgrading to a light X time later, right? What's the cost differential, why, and between two, in either not doing the HAWK, and going to a light versus the other?
Mike, do you have any sense of that? I guess what I would start with, and I'll let you fill in, is that I know that, the price I'm aware of, that an RRFB currently costs is about sixty thousand dollars. So, from that, I'm sure a lot's more expensive, and the light that we're talking about is probably part of a larger overall project cost, and I'm gonna leave that to Mike to answer.
And just ballpark, I'm not looking for exacts, I'm just curious.
Yes, just to see if it's, if it's worth it. I mean, if we're talking about a year down the road after this thing's installed, and going to the light, or two years.
Well, do you remember, yeah, so, so the current timeline, the lead time to get component parts is pretty significant, so we're gonna bid this job, the intent is to bid this job this summer. And then allow about nine months of lead time for components to be received. And then construction, um, next summer, July, August, I think, is a timeframe. Um, so my cost, project costs?
So I haven't got specific project costs on the HAWK itself, but as Carla noted earlier, the, the full provisions for the stoplight will get installed now. And, uh, it's, it, what's needed for the HAWK is very similar to well, the, let's just say, the poles will be the same for the signal, just in anticipation that the, the signal's gonna get installed. Um, so, you know, electrical cabinets, conduits, um, pedestrian crosswalk activations, uh, all that kind of stuff is gonna get installed now, because we're gonna put a new road on there. And new sidewalk, and the last thing we wanna do is tear up new asphalt to put in additional infrastructure to accommodate a stoplight that we know will be in the future. Um, so, with all that said, you will have a cost savings from the HAWK to the stoplight. But, uh, you know, well, all, the, the, the traffic engineer estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, uh, stoplight. And, and that was just for the, uh, equipment and conduit and electrical. Yeah, and so the HAWK would be, you know, in that range, um, knowing that it's very similar to the stoplight.
Gotcha, thank you. And do we have an estimation of what timeline we'd be looking at, and when do, when to, when, let me just have to go ahead and at what point do you think after post-installing HAWK, would we, would the traffic light come into play?
So based on input, it would be on a, a volume warrant, and so in order to justify installation of the stoplight, we would have to do traffic counts. And assess the level of service of that in, intersection. And once the, the volume-based merits are there, and your level of service drops, then that would be justification for a stoplight.
We have any kind of forecast right now?
No.
Five years.
Uh. You know, it could be five years, um, with the conversion of Front Street to right-in, right-out, that is gonna transfer some volume. You know, it could be five years, um, with the conversion of Front Street to Right-In, Right-Out, that is gonna transfer some volume to that intersection. And so it, it's something that we'll have to monitor as, as things progress and, and the town grows. Um. But no, I, I can't tell you, um, you know, in the Kittleson study, there are twenty-year projections. Um, but that is based on. Um, certain improvements, and so. Eh, the, it's hard to, to uh. Translate those improvements into incremental years such as five years or, or ten years or, you know. Something other than that. So we could run the analysis, but again, it's, it's somewhat hypothetical. And it's best to just monitor it in real time. And, and see, you know, you're gonna know if, if the level of service drops at Boardman and Main. Uh, cuz you're just gonna have traffic problems, a- and that would warrant justifying, you know, going out there and doing. Uh, some traffic counts and, and a- assessing what that level of service is at that intersection.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, Mike, that's. So we made this change to the Hawk. Because uh, we don't have the, the traffic to, to uh, justify it, or did we decide based on?
So, yeah, it was, it was a number of inputs that we sat down and we reevaluated this. So what I will tell you is that Kittleson's current evaluation, so today's scenario, existing. Um, PM peak that they looked at for Main Street and Boardman Avenue is level of service C. So we are not very far from hitting that level of service D. I mean, we're there, we're at C currently. When you look at the twenty-year projections for Main Street and Boardman, it's a level of service E. So somewhere over the next twenty years, the projections are, we're gonna trigger that need to convert this from a Hawk. To an actual, to, to some addition, to something additional from that. What it is could still be, you know, we could still continue to have that conversation about what it is, but we know there's not enough space to put around about. You know, we've done some other analysis there, and street light is what, from the city's perspective, makes sense. So what I will tell you is that I can confidently say. I believe that somewhere in the next twenty years, we're gonna be, we'll have that conversation. I think it's sooner than that, given the growth we've seen. On the industrial, the commercial. And the residential side, I think we're gonna see that sooner rather than later.
So if you.
Three years, five years, seven years, somewhere in there would be my.
If we had been any um, pushback last week, or at the last meeting, if we had not raised the concerns about the right-in, right, or the, you know, the left turns on, on front and all of that, would we have continued with the light? Or would you guys have decided this anyway, or would you have had a reason to look at it again?
Um, the planning commission meeting last month. Drove us back to look at it a little closer, um, but you'll notice we didn't modify the whole thing.
No, no, but no, but you, you, you considerably uh, made it. Easier to understand and, and.
Yeah.
Consider it, for sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Carla, Carla, this is Matt Hugard. I know I'm not a staff member, but am I permitted to point out a few things for clarification purposes?
We're gonna treat you like stand tonight.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Matt Hugard with Kittleson, um. I, I thought if I could share my screen real quick, um, I might be able to help everyone visualize, um. The, uh, what we're talking about here, um. So forgive me for sharing an example in Tigered, Oregon, but I think it's a pretty um. Unique um, and similar situation. So this is an intersection. On Durham Road and uh, a couple of years ago, it had an RRFB which is very similar to what you all have out there, um, crossing. At, at uh, Boardman and Main. And um.
You need to share that, we're not seeing it.
It's, oh, there it is. Sorry, there it is.
Oh.
Are you, what are you seeing?
Yeah, now we can see it.
Okay. Are you seeing the, the, the image, the aerial im- or the street view image?
Intersection, crosswalk?
We're seeing a crosswalk, we're seeing a street view.
All right, thank you. So um, this is an RRFB that used to exist um, at this intersection. It was a three-legged intersection, so it's a little different from what you all have, but. Very similar in, in situation. And I'll switch the street view image and you can see now they've got what they, this is what a Hawk looks like. So. It sits on a traffic pole and a mast arm, very similar to a traffic signal. And you'll see that the, the signal heads up here are not your standard three-section heads, they're these uh, doghouse-style. Heads, and these are the heads that you would need for pedestrian crossing. Essentially what happens is. Somebody comes over here, pushes the button, it activates. And these buttons are these signal um, heads flash red. And they flash red, um, and they stop traffic, the pedestrian crosses. And then these, these signals start to flash red again, and that permits motorists to proceed, um. And so you end up with, and sorry, I gotta change the view here so you can get a little better perspective. You end up with a, a pole on one side and you can do the pole on the other. What you're essentially doing is you're installing. The equipment uh, for the eventual traffic signal. So you have no throwaway work with a Hawk signal other than replacing these heads. You still have. The poles, the mast arms, the conduit, and the controller cabinet. And all that is needed eventually for the signal. So you're essentially just doing. Uh, ninety-five percent of your traffic signal. Up front, and you have really very little throwaway costs when it comes time to actually constructing and, and turning on a traffic signal and using it for traffic signal purposes. So. Thought this is just a nice visual representation of what it eventually looks like. Looks very much like a traffic signal, just doesn't operate like a signal until it's ready to.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, thank you. That, that really, that makes a lot more sense to me.
Yep, and then cost-wise, um, you're. Essentially putting all the infrastructure in for your traffic signal, so the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar estimate is. The going rate for signals these days, just a lot of, a lot of demand, uh, a lot of backorder. And that includes the design and engineering, so I think that would be a total cost estimate, um, in this case. So I'd say. Even though we would be putting in a Hawk. Signal as part of the initial implementation of, of turning on the, the, the intersection. Um, it covers the full cost of the signal minus the replacement of the signal heads. And that's, that's an estimate, a plus or minus on that, but I think that's a, a good working estimate for discussion purposes.
And there'll be, yeah, I would just add to that, the additional cost that the city will incur will be the, the roadwork.
Yeah.
So the improvement that we're doing to the road.
Thank you for sharing that, Matt. That was very helpful. If I understand correctly, then one of the reasons why we're doing this is so that we can not trigger the. The IM, or is that correct, or?
Oh, we're, we're still tr- we've triggered it, cuz we have a level of service D at Front Streets.
Okay.
So that's why we're uh, um, implementing the right-in, right-out on the Front Streets. So we also have a safety, a safety warrant, which we still have, and that's why we're doing the Hawk. So I mean, the, a, a primary impetus for doing this project was. Safety, um, pedestrian safety predominantly at that intersection. And, and while we can, while we can focus on the high school and the impacts during lunch hour. The reality is, is that pedestrians along Main Street are all along Main Street, and they're, they're pretty much all day long. So, um, and as summer comes, you're only gonna see that increase. So. The, the crossings there at Boardman and Main for pedestrians is pretty consistent. I mean, there are some peaks of time when you see more and less, and certainly the school has a peak. And, and you know, an ebb and flow, but, but there's pedestrian traffic pretty consistent throughout the day. And we have a school teacher who walks. Um, lives on the north side and teaches on the south side and wa- walks that route every day as well. So it's not just students, it's. It's people who work in the community, it's people who live in the community, it's people who recreate the community, um, and we just see a lot of activity. Um, that gets focused on that intersection, cuz I think people perceive it as a safer intersection, particularly now that we have the RRFB there.
And then. New question. There, there's only uh, utilities going in on the northern, southbound. There's nothing going on that eastern, westbound roads, right? As far as equipment for this?
So for the light, yeah, the equipment is all kind of centered around where the poles are going to be. So um, at the corner on the south. Poles will be on the southwest corner and the northeast corner. And so that's where you'll see a lot of that infrastructure. There could be some infrastructure on the northwest corner as well. Um, the built environment at the CND is probably precluded a whole lot of infrastructure that would be incorporated there. Couldn't figure out how to put a pole in on that corner.
Well, is there a signal marker on, on both sides? Opposite of the light pole?
No, but there could be, there could be an electrical cabinet or something like that, that could be other infrastructure.
These aren't push-button activated?
The Hawk, the Hawk, yes, yes. And, and crosswalks eventually on an actual street light would be push-button activated as well. Um, but you still, if the, the other infrastructure would be electrical cabinets, those types of things. Maybe I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry.
I, I was just asking if, if the equipment was gonna be on basically all four corners, the, the two corners for the lights, and then the opposite corners, I'm assuming that push button.
Well, yeah, there would, there would need to be at least that limited ability to do. Yeah. Guys, I'm gonna encourage you to talk to everyone.
So I was just showing you that when, when you do put the light in, you'll be able to just do basically a. Put the other. One pole cover two streets, so.
Yep, it'll have a long arm and a short arm, and that's why the, the foundation base is so big, because of the weight of holding that, and putting it in this environment with the wind load. Yep.
Gotcha. I can't think of any more questions. On the, on the word, the rights or blocks to Main Street, that's. That, so no car will be able to go in that area. It won't be just a little curb or anything like that, but no cars will be able to go in that area? For sure?
Are you kind of on the schematic, the shaded area?
Sh- the shaded area right there. So basically, that's gonna be blocked out to traffic completely.
In some, again, final engineering has not been finished, but yes, in some, in some way, shape, or form, you will not be able to traverse. That middle lane in front of, in front of Front Street.
So if we have too many cars turning left on that middle lane, they could back up into the main.
Absolutely. We could be creating a problem here, too.
Yeah, that's what the point I brought up a little bit ago, that's on, yeah.
If, if we did determine that the Hawk was uh, we, we understand it's gonna be smarter and it's going to reset. After it has been going off too many times, is there a way that we can manually go in and. Help, I mean, let's say it doesn't do it enough that we need it to do, and that backup happens? Is there a manual override that we can say, hey, we're gonna let people cross or programs only cross in then five minutes of traffic and then cross?
Um, I, I don't, I don't have enough knowledge about how the Hawk system works to answer that question. It does appear to have some programmability to it. I don't know if there's anybody who's. I don't know if Matt or one of the ODOT, ODOT folks might have a little bit of more knowledge about the Hawk system. I don't know that it's one that O specifically uses. Matt, do you have any, any insight into that?
Yeah, it's got a full controller cabinet uh, associated with it, much like you would do a normal traffic signal. So it's got the capabilities to put as much brains in it as you want, um. In this case, the way it would work is it's a pedestrian-activated situation. So pedestrian walks up, hits the button. It starts flashing red, it slows traffic down, stops them completely. Pedestrians then cross, and there's a timing associated with how long it flashes for the pedestrians to cross. But once the pedestrian is fully cleared of the intersection. It'll start to flash red again, and then vehicles are allowed to proceed as long as there's not a pedestrian in the crosswalk. Now. What the beauty of the Hawk is. You can time it so that, that, the next pedestrian who comes and pushes the button, you can program a delay into. The Hawk so that it doesn't immediately go off again. It waits for thirty seconds, forty-five seconds, two minutes, whatever you wanna set it at. So it's fully programmable and you can go in and adjust it over time. So if you aren't. Um, getting it enough time to, between activations, you can, you can adjust it as needed. So that's the beauty of it, is it's not. It's not, it's not push-button activated and it always goes off, it goes off with a delay per year settings. And so you can do whatever you want with it at that point.
Can I ask this, my question exactly, that, that would be my concern.
And something to remember, this drawing here is not the scale. Yet, obviously. I mean, if, if we're, if we're worried about the right-in and right-out being on Front Street, that, that barrier that right now shows is going right up path, right at the edge of Chevron, the north side of Chevron Building. It could be shorter than that, giving us more room in the center.
It could be.
Because we're only worried at this point with the Hawk thing to do the right-in, right-out for Front Street.
Right.
Instead of, instead of Sinclair like we were last month.
Right.
So that could be considerably shorter.
This is a schematic layout. This is not engineered drawings. So yeah, we've not done that final engineering work. In fact, I, as I, Anderson Perry won't be doing the final engineering work, so. You know, that'll be part of the project, so. I, I believe is how I understand that, so. Yep.
So you said there'd be more diagonal spot parking spaces over on the high school side?
Yeah.
How many, do you know how many?
About another eighteen. So, so where northeast First Street comes out, there would not be parking across from First. But once you got to the other side of that intersection, it would, it would basically mimic this. From, from the um.
Gotcha.
From the other side of First, it's about the same number of spots. I think it's about eighteen spots. And then we've committed to facilitate some sidewalk on the school district property as well. They're providing a, a lot of parking availability. But that will be beneficial to CND, it'll be beneficial. Um, to uh, the landowner of the property behind CND and, and Chevron, but it'll also be beneficial to the school district.
So how do we address the crossing of pedestrians or people that have parked in that second? We'll just call it parking lot for now, the angled parking, that we have that cross at First Street?
So there's a cross at, there's a cross, their main and Boardman Avenue, there's a crosswalk, and there is a. Crosswalk envisioned on um, at First and Boardman Avenue as well.
Okay.
Yep, that's kind of why there's that refuge there, cuz that's where.
No, no light, no lights or nothing.
No light or anything there. No, no RRFB, nothing for that one. No.
Okay, no, was there anything else you have staff?
Nothing else from staff.
Oh, right now, was there, I'm assuming no additional correspondence other than?
Nope, you're, you're seeing it. We haven't received anything else.
It's hosting morning as well, since it's sitting here as the applicant. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application other than the applicant? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application?
Um, we've got.
So, you get a card, you will?
Yes.
Thank you. Missed your hat. We just have a month. Do we have a month?
We would have a month tonight, so just, just, yeah, just stand where you are and please name and address for the record.
Uh, Allen Tannenhour, one twenty-two West Seventeenth Street, Padalel, Oregon. Um, yeah, I was here the last week and month ago, time flies, but I thank you, thank you all for being here. Um, I'm in opposition to uh, one key aspect which we. There was a lot of conversation on last time, which is the median. Down uh, Main Street, which I feel will significantly impact my business, and I represent the Sinclair one hundred Main Street. Um. And there's a few, you guys hit on one. Uh, segment of a paragraph that you already talked about, a partial median. To a fold, so I think you, you, we all, you discussed that, I was gonna bring that up, but you, you, you guys found that. Um, I would like to make a few comments, um. Uh, the thirteen, twenty feet, uh, ODOT does make exceptions, so I, commissioners, take that with a grain of salt. It's not something that's. Can't be. Uh, worked with, I mean, Boardman's an old city, uh, most of these cities are built free. This engineering, you go to Love's Truck Stop, eighty-four, it's, you know, one thousand three hundred twenty-one feet from intersection, perfect. Well, Bill, Boardman was built, you know, our gas station was built in the sixties, um. So, um. Anyway, I just, yeah, I, I, I'm opposed to it. Um, we were closed for uh, five, six weeks, uh, Boardman. For the Chevron, picked up. for the Chevron picked up a lot of traffic, probably folks need fuel, probably patronize their business, hopefully they appreciate it, I appreciate your business. Uh, lots of bumpers out on the road, folks, um, if people can't get to our site, uh, we're predominantly freeway, uh, probably sixty-fourty, maybe sixty-five, thirty-five freeway business uh traveling north, turns left, if they can't get to us, they're gonna stack in up in the Chevron. And there was a sense of that already with us being closed, they were packed, overpacked. You could have a recurring uh issue there, um. People pulling RVs, boats, trailers, it's, I think it's asking too much for people to go through a traffic light, turn left, cross a double yellow, across two lanes uh to get to our site. Um, long term, uh, in the I M, front streets are gonna be closed, they're gonna be cul-de-sac, that's an intended twenty-year plan, y'all don't know that, you should. Uh, south and north, that's, that's what their goals are, is to, is to cul-de-sac and close those completely, um. As, so you can't even use front streets. So, when that day comes, I'm not sure who will get to my location at all or out, or they can get in or I'm not sure are they gonna get out. Uh, they are gonna ask for an easement uh for me to put the light in on my property, not a fan of.
When you say light, you're talking still about the stoplight or the Hawk?
Well, either one, there's gonna be a, uh.
Right, I mean, yeah, but your opposition is still the same as if it was with the stoplight versus.
Well, I'm not opposed to the stoplight, um.
Right, well, I know, but I mean, as far as everything that, that plays into that.
Yeah.
The median.
Yeah, if, if the median's of all of the stoplight, then I'm not a fan of granting an easement, which they can take it if they want, but uh they're gonna need some of my property to, to do the footing and uh erect the, the su- support posts, um. So. So that's, I guess, kind of in summary, I don't need to reiterate the conversation, but I, I think there's some questions to ask and I appreciate that, but uh we're, we're partnered with the community. I've invested just, you know, my budget, a million dollars, probably spent every cent of it, uh, with the infrastructure there, uh, most of it's underground, can't see it, but it's a, it's a big expense for my company, we're, we're invested in the community. Um, and we, we, you know, uh, help pay the bills and we, we have customers, uh, we do get traffic from the, from the river, uh, you know, would impact Chevron potentially, people couldn't get to his site so much in that direction, but the I four, uh, I think people in town will agree that that kind of makes this town, the town needs the interstate, uh, and the businesses here need the interstate traffic to get to their front door, so, uh, that's pretty much what I have to say, thank you. Any questions for me you want to? But I'd be glad to participate, ask questions, I'll meet her through the meeting, thank you.
Do you have any? Well, just so, so we're clear, you understand that we, we've opened up one of your turns back into your store, right? With, with doing this Hawk system, that barrier won't be as long and you'll have that left turn into the, off of Main Street into your, what you won't have is the one from Front Street, so the, the person that it still affects no different is, is the, is Sun- Sunrise Cafe. You don't get the traffic on your, on your, your uh Front Street turn, but the next one uh on Main, where, where, uh, and they'll be able to do the same in De Chevron or CND coming from the river because that, that barrier's not gonna be as long, when the light does go in, it, it will go that, but again, we don't, we don't have a timeline with that and, and we all know it will, obviously, but by then, hopefully people are used to it and everybody, you know, granted, this is the freeway traffic, first time off in Boardman, they're not gonna, they're not gonna know, they'll have to do it the same way they do it in Tiger or, or uh, uh, Wilsonville down there. But.
I mean, it doesn't make me feel very good not knowing, and I guess that's, when you sign up for something, going into it, I don't like the language, says for now, like it could be six months, could be five years, so.
Yeah.
For me, it weighs heavy on me that, uh, it's, 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 it's coming sooner than later and I don't like it, so.
I think also what he's, what he's concerned about is that, you know, we are, if we pull the trigger on this, it is an absolute, that at some point in time, it will be right in, right out. And we've already, we've already put the infrastructure in there to make it just that much easier for the city to do that.
But if we don't, then we're, we're seriously limiting uh our ability to grow at all, I mean, we're saying this is what we wanna stay, this is where we wanna stay.
Well, I, so I, I had the opportunity the other day and I was talking to Carla as well, but I went over there and sat for about a half an hour, four or five minutes, just checking out, out the traffic and and that front street into your place is used quite a bit, I, I will admit, it's, it, I mean, they go, they get off the freeway and they go straight into, to, to, um, to the Sinclair. What that, what type of danger that presents to the public, I, I didn't, I mean, I was there during, relatively during one rush hour, I guess. I didn't see a lot of near misses or anything like that, but I'm not on the streets all day, so.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Okay, uh, Karen, would you like to speak as well?
Yeah, Karen Persaud. Seven, seven, nine, two ninety-eight, Rupi Road, I just moved, I kept the address, um, Boardman. Yeah, um, I have to agree with Sinclair here. You are basically, until we see improvement and we can say, okay, it might have been okay, you're basically killing me because it's not gonna happen. People aren't gonna be welcome back in Boardman, they're not gonna take the time to go around the block to go around to my place. And if the village was here, they'd probably be saying the same thing, and yeah, it's just not making Boardman friendly at all, and it's, it's sad because I've been here all my life and I just don't know what to say, but sometimes it's hard to change colors and I don't like to see some changes, and this is just one of them. And so I might be an ostrich with my head in the sand, but that's how I feel, and so I just keep it there.
Have a quick comment, um, I've been here almost three years and this just happened today, I didn't know there was a village. Did we went after lunch there today, take our secretaries to lunch for?
The restaurant?
Yep, no idea, never saw a sign, never knew, and then I, I wouldn't know if somebody hadn't told me that if people afford to drive, they're gonna actually do it. Cause right now, well, they need to go sign up, just, just so you know.
You just stayed at the hotel, yeah?
Yeah, there's gonna be a sign.
I had no idea that was back there until today for lunch, so.
You mean to get, how to get back on the freeway signage?
No, like up the freeway ways, we're gonna have the food, you know, like food left, food left, that sort of thing, it shows that, that business is.
That's not a city function, that's a, it's an ODOT function, and if you want one of those, sort of the head sign, you, you, you.
Petition though.
Apply to ODOT and there's a fee for that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Karen? Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, let's quickly go on to neutral testimony before we get too much discussion going on, is there any neutral testimony for this application? And, uh, the applicant would like to provide any rebuttal?
Yep, yep, absolutely, so, um, as the applicant in this particular situation, um, we made some significant changes to the proposal, uh, based on what we heard last month. Um, we did uh more evaluation of the Kelson Main Street assessment and the I M P. I think we've clearly made the case for why we're doing what we're doing. Um, we've addressed the left turn request on Main, um, and, and maintained that. So I, I think, I think we've made some accommodations to what we heard. Um, Mike, do you wanna add anything, um, or Matt, would you add anything as a applicant rebuttal?
No, no, nothing for me.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, no, nothing for me either, thank you.
Uh, public speaking portion is very, is not close. Was there any question raised that you need to?
No, I think we've addressed it as the applicant, I'm happy to continue answering any, uh, staff, any questions you have.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, session time. It was with me. I truly believe that, 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 I mean, I hate to say this because Sunrise still doesn't get any benefit to the change with the Hawk. But, when I think about um other places that have already dealt with this, um, and I, I don't know why, I always think about going, going to the coast and when you get up through Beaverton and all of that, every single exit that you take, you have to go, like if you wanna go to Red Robin over there, you have to go to the light, go around and come back. And there was a time when that didn't happen, and I know, I know that it's a small, I know it's a small business, and what do you, I just didn't ask your question, then I.
Wait, actually, you can ask a question and she can answer the question.
Do you, do you have a estimate as far as your traffic coming from freeway versus construction, local business, people that pay attention to your business, would you say it's thirty percent?
Well, with constructions, yes, I'd say fifty fifty. Right now.
So you think, is any of your business coming out of freeway?
Oh, definitely, it's not more.
Okay. You hear the same, oh, sorry.
I'm gonna ask that question about that, what was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think about the beginning of that.
Right.
Um, last month when we met over this, I, I had a lot of reservations, definitely a lot of reservations for the not being able to turn into your gas station or, um, just the, the impact that it would have on our local businesses, and I gave me pause. I, I didn't wanna be the one to have to vote yes on something like that. I do think there's a lot of compromises made in this, there is one shortcoming definitely for the city player, that they can't access it during the front row. But I also like that medium in the middle too, because right now it's chicken, you're playing chicken when you're trying to turn in anyway. If cars are coming, this is gonna give you more of the ability to stop and let the cars go around. I think, and I also think that, that I think that little going around that block is gonna actually be good for businesses back there, it's gonna force traffic back there, and it's not a big ask, it's not like we're asking you to drive four miles around or you're not driving really far away at all, you're doing a very small town block that will get traffic back there. I think the compromises so far, everything that I have reservations about mostly have been, in my opinion, has been, makes me feel easier about making, and then the other thing too is we have to, we, we, it's obvious that what we've got going on right now is um, we've got to a level that has already been previously adopted, that we do have to do so. And so what's the lesser of two evils? This is a really good transition into if we ultimately, we are gonna grow, we ultimately will end up with instant structure down there that is going to provide more lights and more traffic deviations. This is kind of a, a good way to get us used to it and figure out what we need to do to be prepared for that.
Well, I like to eat at a lot, and if the food's good, I'm gonna go around the block. So, I mean, I'm willing to drive around the block, I'm willing to go around the block to go get gas if I would prefer that gas station over another. So, I mean, look at how many people go into Trotdale, which is a cluster of, of, of mess, but people still go around that loop every day to hit all of those gas stations and all those restaurants. So I don't think it's really gonna affect us that much once people get used to it.
There really truly isn't a lot of places to eat off the freeway here, important, and you do, you really won't have a few, so it's not, there's not a lot of choices. When they, they choose to stop here, they're going to take the, the route that they need to take to, to go to that restaurant that's available.
Well, I mean, you've traveled to other places and, oh, what food's in the area, you're gonna follow your GPS to get there. So it's gonna take you around the block right where it needs to be.
Yes, sir, nevermind. Yeah, generally, is there?
Ask me, Mike, what?
Other business, the, 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 the other businesses, I mean, and other towns, do they have freeway signage? All I wanna make sure is that, that as, as, as restrictive as we have to be here because of several things, ones that we some, that we don't have any control over, I just want us to do our due diligence and, and help them make sure everybody knows where to ask, that, and as much, I mean, you can see her cafe sign, you know, from, from a, from a good distance. That doesn't tell you how to get there necessarily, but at least, um, I would, I would, I would say petition ODOT immediately, get, get your thing out there on, I don't know what that costs, but, um, I would still, I mean, there, every town has it. And I don't think we do, right, there's nothing down there.
Yeah.
Is there one for you?
Uh, no, I had it removed because I have my two billboards, that they're close enough, but yeah, I mean, you can do it, it's just an expense to the business.
Do you know how much it is?
It's been a while since I looked at it, it was like only two thousand dollars a year to have a sign on the freeway. Yes, the, the, the small ones, I don't know what the going rate is now.
Like the one that says fuel.
That one, yeah, that was pre-COVID, so.
They're the blue directional signs.
Yeah.
Yes, the blue ones that say food and which way, yes.
Yeah, food, gas.
They're expensive and there's a lot of upkeep to them, cause if they're not reflective enough,
Sure.
they take them down, so you have to continually update those signs.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Commissioner Irons has arrived.
My apologies. Those fellows both.
It happens of being a public servant.
I am, I still have my reservations, honestly, uh. I, I think that this is, it's definitely compromised, but, but I think what it's, what it's doing is basically, it will force our hands down the road, it's kind of like a, a first step, do this, and then, oh, by the way, we're gonna do the same thing that you didn't wanna do, just down the road. I, I refuse, I, I really have a hard time with somebody who's not in this town forcing us to do something that's, is damaging to our residents. Especially the businesses in, in, in the area, I, I just, I, I have a hard time, you know, about that, I'm talking about both, the, the I M and ODOT, whatever it is, you know, ODOT saying you were, you have to do this, otherwise we are going to do this, you know, threatening us, but.
Right, yeah, they have their own, they have their own set, set of trigger points and standards that they have to, they have to adjust to also, I mean.
They do, but they also have responsibility as well, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something, then I think, I think it's, it's fair to ask them to do something as well, and all this could be solved by.
Right, well, what they're not doing is closing Front Street yet, and I don't know where you got the information, but that's something that we'll, we'll discuss eventually, I'm assuming.
Yeah, there is, there is a provision in the I M P to close Front Street.
Right.
We're trying to do everything we can to preserve Front Streets so that we can continue to have a right in, right out.
Right.
So.
Which would just be, it'd be a pretty heated discussion, and they went ahead and did it anyway after we went through all this.
And I'm, I'm thinking that the I, the I M P was done two thousand and nine.
Yep.
And it might be time to revisit that, if we can, I don't know how that works, I'm not, not involved with the, you know, issues of that, but it would be nice to be able to revisit that. This, I mean, town has changed quite a bit since then.
Well, again, I think, so this is your deliberation, but I will answer your question, so if you look at the I M P, We identified a level of service C as being the trigger. Both front streets, north and south, are at level of service D. So based on our adopted plan, because we adopted the IAMP in two thousand and nine. And based on the Kittleson report that was done. We've triggered the requirement to make front streets ride and ride out. We've triggered that. There's no argument of the data is there. And that was us, that was us.
Not ODOT.
That's us.
That's us. Well, that's, that's us because we were trying to appease ODOT. That, am I right?
We, we adopted the IAMP. We were not forced to adopt that.
But the, but the reason why we adopted the IAMP is because ODOT was going to come along and say, we're going to close front streets. Am I, am I correct on that or am I wrong?
No, the process of adopting, so there were two versions of the IAMP. There was a two thousand and seven version. And that version had a closed front streets. The community did not want to do that. And the community said we won't adopt it. The community worked with ODOT, the conversation was re-engaged, and we adopted the two thousand and nine IAMP. Which has the first alternative to do front streets as a ride and ride out. The closure of front streets, the discussion of the closure of front street is still in there. I keep hoping that the ODOT folks will just kind of forget that, that piece. Um, but, but it's still in there. They're listening and you guys are driving at home, so quit talking about it. And maybe we can work on them forgetting it.
Honestly, I, I'd like to kind of hear from the ODOT people. They've kind of been silenced.
Well, I, the public hearing has been.
Oh, then I thought that we is, is kind of stacked.
They're all stacked.
Oh, we're, we're in a little bit right now. Yeah, kind of discussion, kind of walking the line again, but, you know, it's all information. But yeah, this is deliberate. We can choose to, if we don't have enough information, we're going to the public, uh, you can. Reopen, reopen. It's, we can use again. I would rather not, honestly. Well, it's pretty low, but it's, it's bad. Anyone else have any, any discussion they want to put in first? As I was saying, I was sitting, yes. Uh, so my thoughts. I'm actually a fan of ride and ride outs. I, I, I drive this every day and it's, it's a nightmare. That sucks around interchange. I keep, you know, for months and months and years, I, I hope it's going to get better and it doesn't. And it's only going to get worse. Uh, it's growing and I don't think that we can just not leave them. And just continue to leave that open like, uh. Did we squeeze in there to the front street? It's just, it's an accident waiting to happen. I stopped doing that. I'm like, I'll get in there and just get my gas to you. Uh, but. I swear I should watch it. But like regardless, those, those streets are currently. I think it has, and if it's going to get worse, we don't do something. That would fall on us, I feel like. Um, the median. I know we talked about last month, the last meeting, I was, I was. Was a fan of the, the reducing the setback on that median and um, left hand turns uh, on the south side of the intersection. Into Sherona and Sinclair's, but. I also, I'm not sure I'm a fan of it right now. Uh, the, I, with, with the Hawk versus the streetlight, it's, I think, more amenable, like, it's going to allow more traffic to go through rather than, well, there will not be a lot of first time. So I think it's amenable. I'm worried about, I think we were talking about like queuing up like one to two cars. And that's concerning a little bit because I think a lot of people are going to want to try and use that. So I'm, I'm on offense about it, honestly. Um, I think we definitely need the, the traffic management uh, equipment at the intersection, honestly. And like we talked about last month, I don't, I don't want anyone else to get hurt, but it's pretty, pretty clear the data was here about. Injuries and, and the unfortunate fatality that we had. And I think we need to do something. I think this is a good mitigation. I like the financial aspect of it, of. It's, it's an amenable solution and it will segue into a future solution really well. Uh, which we're going to need at some point. So I think. I think it's a very well-balanced proposal, actually. We'll give, we'll take. Front streets open, left hand turn land on main. Light change to the Hawk. I don't think it's impossible. I like it. I want to say real quick that Smokey Jovi just got demanded for putting up his no trespassing sign because the truck traffic that has always. Bothered me at those intersections, especially around lunchtime. Is, is gone away because nobody is parking in that lot back there. I mean, nobody, not even the guys that have been there for years and years and he picks his truck up every morning, he's gone all day, he parks it there. Nobody. I mean, sadly, you know, seeing these customers are overflowing straight through the parking lot out to that, that dirt, but he, he got him up quick and, and. It, it helped a lot. Really jammed things up. Does anyone else want to discuss anything else?
Nope.
You ready? We need a motion to either. Accept the proposal or to accept proposal with cited adjustments. To um, reject the proposal or to continue. The meeting to go tonight. So are we calling the Hawk the as presented or as amended?
The Hawk would be as presented because that's what was presented tonight.
Okay, I'm going to approve the site design review CUP twenty-four dash five zeros and a one as presented. Okay, so uh, it's motion to approve. Without amendments or second.
I second.
Okay, uh, can we call, we'll call both on motion second, amendment bridge. To be approving as presented.
Commissioner Barbara?
Yes.
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonight?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Irons?
Upstate.
Commissioner Burici?
Yes.
Pass us four to one extension.
You need to explain the extension.
I'm assuming because you arrived late. Okay.
Uh, so, there's a four two one.
Four two one.
Okay.
Kind of like a baseball.
That was kind of a baseball bat.
Just, uh, uh, one thing I will just share very quickly. So um. We continue to work on the design. Uh, we're still not complete on it, but I can share. Um, with Mr. Hatton Howard that it doesn't appear we're going to need an additional easement for the light. Um, however, some of the sidewalk um, is not aligned um, where it needs to be within the easement. So it will be sidewalk adjustments that I think you'll see, not. Um, easement for the light structure.
Okay. Two more to get to the room. Sorry, I have a little time. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, folks, you're going to cite design review, Lord B W two more dash zero 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 two zero. It's called. Marner owner and, and Gordies. Again, I'm pronouncing this right up in the, subject property stretch of tax loss one hundred and two. Back four, zero nine CC. And it's owned towards country subdistricts, requested to improve a hotel. Sure you're bound in Portobello, check your two point two commercial, check your four point two votes. Review and site design review section four point two point six hundred approval criteria. Provisions within chapter three, design standards creates process effective decision. As we are here. Uh, we are going to. For all the same public hearing testimony. Uh, that I stated earlier. Does anyone wish to disclose any contact bias, expertise or conflict interests at the set? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge planning commissioners and party? There in. Staff report. Nancy. All you need.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Burici. So this request is for a hotel that will be located on Northwest Front Street. The property is owned tourist commercial. And hotels uses in this zone. Although many of the conditions, the conditions listed in the staff report will need to be addressed at the time of development review. There is one condition that will be important to address before application of development review. And will affect the type of hotel that is developed. And honey official McLean will share more of this condition.
We're tag teaming this one, is what she's trying to say. So the hotel is a use allowed. Um, there are development standards and that's why it comes in front of you um, as a type three decision. So. Uh, it's, it's not so much about can they or can't they, it's really about how do they? And the, uh, as part of your packet, they did provide us with a traffic, a trip, what we call a trip generation letter. And the trip generation letter identifies based on the type of hotel that they identified. Which was a, a business hotel um, that the. That it would not trigger uh. The number of trips that they are assessing would happen for the number of rooms identified would not require further traffic study. And so we had some conversations. Um, this is also within the interchange area management plan. So we've got the same document and we have the same kind of requirements to coordinate with ODOT. We did reach out to them. And ODOT, the, the red flag that we kind of jointly agreed was a red flag for us was they, they identified this as a business hotel. And so the difference between just a standard hotel and a business hotel is that usually a business hotel maybe have a longer stay. Um, there, there would be less trips generated per, per overnight guest on a, on a regular basis. So. The reason that you see that, that we did reach out to the applicant and say, hey, we'd like some under, better understanding. So hopefully as part of their testimony tonight, they'll talk a little bit about. Why a business, business hotel. And we're not saying they can't build a business hotel, but what we're saying. Is we have a condition because, because they're not doing a full traffic impact study. We're not, we don't know. If there could be impacts that we would need to ask them to mitigate for based on those trips that their proposal would trigger. So our approach to that was to say, we're going to place a condition of approval on your development request. And we're going to place what's in the industry is called a trip cap. In other words, we're going to cap your number of trips. You cannot have more trips per day. Than what you've identified you would create. Now granted, there's some flexibility in that, you know. The weekend trips are greater or less than daytime. I mean, there's some flexibility between daytime and, and our weekday and weekend and, and some variability in there. But basically, their trip generation letter says we're not going to generate more than, and the number was three hundred and some odd trips, if I remember right. Um, and we said, okay, so we're going to cap your development at that. So that doesn't mean if the three hundred and thirty eighth trip, we're going to, we're going to ding them. But we're going to, you know, if they're, if they're, it begins to look like they're regularly having more trips than what they said they would generate. The condition would allow us to go to them and say, you're not in compliance with your conditional use permit. You're generating consistently more trips than what you were capped at. You either need to modify that, right, you know, self-regulate so that you're under the trip cap. Or you need to do the traffic impact analysis. And if there's any mitigation that that determines needs to happen, then you would be responsible for, for doing that, that mitigation.
How do we know that they are? Just by visual?
Visual, right.
Complaints or what have you, that would.
Right. It, it means we'd hire Matt Q guard again to go look at and analyze it from the city's perspective, from an enforcement, from an enforcement role.
So. And then maybe I'm really, really new at this, but with your saying trips, you're talking about like how many times a car goes in and out of their building. Okay.
Yep. So as an example, in a residential neighborhood, when we talk about trips that a house generates.
Okay.
Your family on average generates ten trips a day. And, and so there are models out there. We could model the trips at C and D. We could model the trips at Sinclair. So there are ways to go out and model those. Um, there's a, um, I'm no engineer, don't want to be, but there is a, a guide for traffic engineers that, that gives them all that information. So. When we had that conversation about business hotel, there were five different types of hotels that are identified in that IT. Um, it's. Hotel, business hotel, resort hotel, motel. And I'm forgetting one. So there are a number, there are a number of different types of hotels. If they pick just a hotel and not clearly said a business hotel. We wouldn't be here because they would be required to do the full traffic impact analysis. That's the difference. So, yeah, and, and, and I, I've raised the issue with them. I, I'm, I'm anticipating that they're going to address this as part of their testimony. So I just want to kind of set that ground for you and then just encourage you to go into public testimony and, and let's hear what. I've not had a chance to talk with either Mr. Kumar or Mr. Porky's um, since. A, a couple of days ago, a couple of emails. And, and that was all focused just on, hey. Here's our question and yep, we're looking at it was kind of the response. So I don't know that they have a full answer as of tonight. This may be something that we continue to work for. And they could as a, as an action tonight, as a, as a um. Their, their own way to mitigate the permit process is to, they can ask for a continuance to get a full traffic report. If that's a, if that's a path they choose, or they may choose to be comfortable with the trip cap. So I, I think we need to hear from them before we make any final decisions because I'll be learning as well.
Well, I can say that if this, if, if this goes through, it makes me feel a lot better about the decision we just made a minute ago in regard to the ride and ride out. Uh, because those people are going to have to get to their hotel, they're going to have to go around.
Yep.
Which allows them to see her restaurant far better. And they're already happy to go that way. So.
Yeah, and, and I will share that when we had the pre-application meeting um, with the applicant and the consultant. Um, we had full, full conversation about the light. And actually, within our hearing tonight, that we've modified the proposal because when we talked with them, it was a full street light. Um, and while it's still going to require people to get to their hotel, to go around the block and down front street. When they depart, they will be able to go to front street and take the right to get onto the freeway. So they're fully aware of the traffic modifications that are proposed.
Uh, was there anything else inside?
I think that's the big thing. I mean, if there's any other questions you have, we're happy to answer it, but um, had a positive site team meeting. Um. Uh, Marty Rodbent, who's our local flower marshal, did indicate that he wants to make sure there's a twenty-six foot space around the building to access because it will require their larger apparatus. Because it's going to be a multi-story building, so. But those are all just the normal kind of conversations that we have as we go through the process with applicants.
Whenever we see one of these things, do we have a public? Do we have a public notification like the post office in that thing that says we're going to be discussing this?
So these are all published in the East Argonian. We publish um, twenty-one days prior to the hearing. So three weeks ago on Tuesday. It was published in the East Argonian that we would, actually, we republished all three of them. We published these two and republished the. Um, the light. And then we send notice to the adjoining property owners, anybody within two hundred and fifty feet.
So you have to, that's, that was going to be my question is how do those people, those first six houses, eight houses on Boardman Avenue? Because I was at the fifteenth house down. Cause I was about the fifteenth house down. How do those guys?
Yep. So you're within, so we look at the, um, so if you looked at the. We did include the vicinity map, right? So if you look at this vicinity map, we, we use the vicinity map and then are the program that we have allows us to put a two hundred and fifty foot border around to that. And that's who we notify. So if you get touched, I mean, even if it's the corner of your property that gets touched, if you're within that two hundred and fifty feet, you get a letter. That says, hey, we're having this hearing. It's on this date, it's at this time, this is the proposal. Um, if you have any, any interest or have a comment, reach out, you know, to Nancy or to myself. Um, so we do that. Uh, and then we also send it to, uh, to affected agencies. So we send it to the fire department. We sent, in this case, we sent it to ODOT. We send it to um the. Park and Rec District and then internally to Public Works. City engineer.
Parking fishing law.
No.
Oh, cause they have that.
But they're a joint landowner, so they received on the drawing.
Oh yeah, so they were.
Yes. Not as an agent, so that's in every landowner. Yes. Yep. Somebody else started a question.
Yeah, sorry, the family. No, it wasn't.
Still on this city.
Uh, was there any other questions with this?
No, uh, again, we have, again, the, the conversations with between staff and ODOT around the, the trips things. But they, they did not submit any comment formally.
Okay.
When this thing being constructed, would its uh? Second street or first street, would that potentially connect to the back of their property?
No, it's a houses on the backside. It's got um. Army Corps property to the west and then the village to the east, to the east. So. Um, the only, yeah, there's no, there's no additional road that would connect into that. So they are taking their access off.
Right, the old house.
I was thinking, there's, there's an alleyway easement area.
It's a utility easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it won't be.
They could, they could obtain utilities to, and that, we have been looking at a couple of different ways to get utilities into there. Um, but there's no. You're trying to have that little strip that's behind.
It's a road.
It, there, it's. All the way down and I could see cars trying to cut through there and getting stuck. Cause it's, the sand's really soft. Once you get past the part that, that scrabbles.
I think that's identified as a utility.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. Cause that's, that's the only people you ever really should go down there unless. Uh.
Yeah.
The owner of that house right there is a partnership stuck down there, but.
Well, when I lived there, I was told I couldn't access my backyard from the easements.
She does all the time.
Yeah, because it was not considered um able to, to access it. So I would just worry that people are going to try to cut through and they will get stuck.
Yes. Okay, note to public enforcement officer.
Oh, I didn't mean to say that for that reason.
No, I.
Just keep that out of the record.
I love that Mike.
Okay, uh, we good?
Yes.
All right, uh, we have anything to speak?
Yes, Van Voorhees Appalachian Engineering, um, near the uh forty-six Middle Rock Lane, Tushy, Washington. I have further information. We immediately contacted our traffic people when we got Carla's inquiry on this. And uh. Like I said, the business hotel was three hundred and thirty-seven on the traffic. And then they looked at the regular hotel and they came up with five eleven, which would trigger a traffic study. Uh, the thing of it is, the thing that uh. Two things to think about. The business hotel, we have kitchenettes, so we're looking at people will probably have some longer stays and whatnot. Uh, in a regular hotel, another thing that generates traffic with a regular hotel are restaurants, convention facilities. Meeting and banquet halls, retail facilities. We have none of this. So that five hundred and eleven figure. Isn't, I don't, we don't feel it was very appropriate. Also. If we reduce the number of, of uh. Of rooms by two. We would fall under the five hundred. But the real issue is the fact that the regular hotel has these. Other amenities that, that we don't have. We are not going to have the restaurant convention facilities, meeting facilities and the retail issues. And those would be a significant generator, particularly uh, particularly restaurants and. You know, periodically on, on conventions. Uh, I will apologize to uh. De Clara that I have. The new information that, that I've just spoken to. And I apologize for that pile paper that they go into these graphs and there's graph after graph after graph. Um. I'll stay with the, the main letter they wrote. It's a lot of boring information. Uh. Should I go beyond this, this issue?
Oh, I, I think, I think the, the question or, or maybe the answer that um I think. Would make tonight simple is are you comfortable with the trip cap?
Yes.
And you're comfortable, well, you're comfortable with a trip cap. I don't need this.
Okay, we just.
We don't need to, we don't need to muddle.
I just want you to know that we did look at the two.
As, as long, as long as you are clearly understanding. We just wanted to make sure you understood that PBS said you were doing a business hotel. I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with doing a business hotel and what that limit would be from a trip generation. If you're comfortable with that, we're okay.
We do have extra space that could generate other businesses that could generate a restaurant. Uh, heaven knows what all else. But that would. Trip. The traffic impact study. So we would have to come back and negotiate that and create.
Yeah.
A very expensive traffic study, but uh. What we're doing does fit the business hotel precisely.
Yep.
Yeah.
I've got it. I've got a bunch of questions, but I don't know whether they're appropriate to, to go in or whatnot, dealing with some of the other issues.
We don't either.
Well, we like, we like to know. What kind of improvements we're going to have to make on the frontages and a whole bunch of things like this and. Uh. We've had things where we built something and then the city comes in completely after the back says, oh. By the way, you have to put in new sidewalks and new curb and gutter that were already there and. And we just, we don't want to get into that trap.
I think those are questions for, for Carla. I don't necessarily think that we need to have that discussion with us here tonight. Uh, cause we're not going to address those, but definitely. I would say follow it up.
Yeah, what's the, what's the venue for us working out?
So I think, I think the condition that um we could clarify here is condition nine. Um, and condition. Well. And condition thirteen. And so specifically the rest of the, the first one, the trip cap, access permits, um, fire access plans. Uh, I mean, one through eight are all kind of onsite ident- um onsite. Components um that is there, that is truly their responsibility. Um, water and wastewater installations, we've identified where those connections are and they need to bring them to their site. So that gets us through one through eight. Nine talks about development of frontage along Northwest Front Street needs to be done to the standards outlined, outlined in the, in both the form and development code and the public work standards. So what that really means is that portion of Front Street that is in front of your property is what you're going to, we're going to be looking at you to develop. We know that the balance of Front Street. Is in poor condition. Um. And. Internally, we've had the discussion that. When you start, when you start building your project. We know we're going to have to figure out how to continue to work through that quadrant of the Main Street interchange and figure out how to make those front street improvements. Which is the benefit sunrise and will be a benefit Sinclair, be a benefit to village. We also need to figure out how we modify First Street because. The bank that was there prior to sunrise did full frontage improvements and has a sidewalk and it's the only sidewalk on that particular part of the street. So we know we're going to have to have those conversations with those hotel owners. And other developments along, along First Street about how those improvements might happen. Um. But. This project's responsibility is that portion of Front Street in front of you. Now we can talk about what the width of that is, but that would be the requirement. Um, stormwater is on. This would be the easements needed for this development that would be on your property. The construction plan is really the entire construction plan. So it's how do we get the water, the wastewater to you? Um, how do, or how do you connect to where we are and what's, what are those connections? And then what is the road construction plan? So that's really what the construction plan is looking at is not so much what's, what's onsite. But it's really about what are those offsite improvements? Um. And thirteen is kind of a, a restatement that all infrastructure proposed for the development will need to meet. So again, that's that infrastructure. It's the water and wastewater and it's the road. Does that, does that help clarify what we're looking for with?
We want to know. What kind of, before we. You know, pull the, pull the ripcord. We, we still want to know. You know, I expect sidewalks, I expect probably curb and gutter. Typically on a subdivision, you might build half a street. And whatnot, we end, but we need to know what those things are. You know, to, to, to move on. And uh. That twenty-six feet that the fire chief wants is a huge amount of road and.
Well, he didn't say it had to be road. He just needs to make sure he can have a fire apparatus around your building.
It takes, well, that, that's, that's a big deal because if I have to have a paved road around there. You know, I've got. I've got something in the range of three hundred and some feet of road. Um. If it could be. Well, I probably need to talk to the chief in detail about it.
Yeah, no, he, he needs to be.
But I, I agree that.
To get his.
He has to be able to get his ladder truck around there and service those people. It is a fully sprinkled building, but still. There's, and there's issues of rescue.
Yep.
And whatnot and uh.
Yep.
Fire life and safety is not something that we want to wrestle about. We want full fire life and safety issues. But uh, yeah, I agree. I'd like to work out with him. Um. Oh my gosh, so. You know, if there's going to be street lighting needed down one of the road frontages, we'd like to know about that.
Um, it's all being a code, right?
Yeah, it's all things that, that uh, the development code would outline or the public work standards would outline it. So.
Another issue I'm concerned about is. What did a survey that Ron McInnes did? He shows the center line for Front Street. And it starts out at like a hundred foot right away, but as you get out towards that cul-de-sac at the west end. Everything starts narrowing up and uh. I don't know what we really have on defining that street and the cross-sections and, you know, and the legalities of that. So that's something that we need to work out is. You know, where it really is.
Yeah.
There's quite a gap. There's quite a gap. Between the center line and, and our property lines. It's a little strange.
So Chair Berici, I would say that most of these issues are probably issues that should be. Direct. I mean, I think I've answered to the best of my ability relative to the decision that's in front of you. I think that devil is in the details. Um, and that once approved, they can certainly come back and work with staff on what the, the detail of all of those questions are.
Yeah, I think what I would ask you, uh, Mr. Voorhees is. Is what we're voting on in sufficient detail to answer your questions or would you like to, are you requesting to read some Mick? Or is the, is the body good to vote on just what?
Where we get the able, ability and how to get the ability to resolve these things.
That comes after this step.
For a joint, for a joint benefit and whatnot.
Yeah, we're just giving you the opportunity to move forward. And after that, then it's up to the code, not us. As to what, what you can and can't do or what's required. We can't, we don't have any effect on that at this point because we're not rewriting the code.
Yeah, well, we're.
For a, a variance later too. Um, I, I don't want to waste too much time. Um. I, I think this does address what. You're asking. The additional. Yeah, we shouldn't address the variance now anyway.
We're just addressing if he, we're going to do a cap what's in front of you.
Yeah.
Right. So we, we do in here indicate that because of the conditions, they need to come in and show how they comply with all of those. By submittal of an application for development review permit, which is a staff level permit. And so that's where we go, yeah, landscaping plan, yep, parking plan, yep. Uh, construction plans for review, yep. Um, and between now, between your approval and that, the submittal of all of those final plans is when we can work through the devil in those details and say. Yep, this is what we think your frontage road right away is. This is what we. This is what we believe to be. And, and then that's where we can also say, and this is the road standard and how wide you have to build it. Uh, as you will notice, when we start building Front Street. Over on that side. And connect first down to Oregon Trail, you're going to see how we're going to rebuild the truck parking. And we're trying to figure out how to do that kind of truck parking at all four quadrants. The quadrant where his proposal is, is probably the most difficult to do that in because it's really, that was really not clear where that truck parking could happen. But we're, we are actively having that conversation about. We know as a community, we don't allow people to drag their trucks to their homes. And if you don't allow that, then you've got to figure out whether, you've got to at least be willing to work with them on where they're going to park their trucks. So also we have businesses who need truck parking. And we're trying to figure that out as well. So I don't know what the final solution will be. For how Front Street will be built in front of their development. Um, when we have a clear development proposal. The city's going to work with them. To how we define the rest of Front Street. Cause we know we're going to have to make those improvements from their property boundary to, to Main Street. Cause that whole Front Street's not in the best of.
In current, most of those are not going to be type three decisions, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so.
I'm comfortable with Carla's approach and working with Carla and uh. Uh, we don't exactly want to build. A freeway down there that goes nowhere.
Well, the city doesn't want a freeway to nowhere either. So, um, but it does need to be a standard that, um.
It's a nightmare now.
It is a nightmare now. Um, it, it's going to have to be big enough to allow, I mean, because they're going to service truck drivers as well in that hotel. So they're going to have to be able to get a truck in there and out of there, but it's not going to be. We don't need a truck stop there. We just need the ability to make sure that there's enough capacity. There's enough pavement with, to get something in there that needs to get in there and get out. Yep.
Uh, was there anything from that, anything else from the outfit? Chat, anything else?
No, I just. I just had a few questions and I needed to see where we were going and how we were going to do it on the concerns of. One of my jobs is uh. Trying to balance between the cities and my client, that this is fair as possible and that's what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application? Any neutral testimony? Which we know about all. Uh, public hearing or public testimony portion of hearing got closed? Do you have any questions first down?
Do we know what brand of hotel is a private thing or that we asked about the one on the inside freeway?
We. We have. Seen some indications of what it is, um, but nothing to confirm what the brand is. So. All indications are. The hotel on the south side as well as the hotel on the north side are going to be something you're going to recognize.
True.
I mean, every indication on both of those projects is you're going to recognize it. So. It's not like Sam's Hotel. Yeah. So. I've never seen it in Sam's.
Yeah, it's kind of hell. I just moved them on. All right. Delivery man. Well, it's consumed. I think it fits right perfect. I, I like it. It just because it's going to, it's going to help. It's going to help sunrise. It's going to help the village. And in fact, if they're not, they're not, not going to have a restaurant. That, that just steers all that business right in these bags and. I would be against it if they did have. So. The people behind them, the residents, they won't be seeing the freeway so much, but I think that matters.
I got some sound.
And they.
Noise, noise barrier.
Whatever.
Hotels generally tend to be quiet establishments.
Will? We have any discussion or emotion?
I went through first, first site design review, RVW two four zero 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 two zero as presented.
A second. Okay, uh, so we go right to will. And then we'll, and then second to approve. As presented in the documents.
Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Conwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Irons?
Yeah.
Commission Chair Borisi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We, we, we're carrying on, since I'm, you already done two four. Dash zero 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 two three. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, it's called order. Just Taylor, owner, Andy Sullivan is the applicant. So we probably spread his tax lot three hundred, position map four hundred and five east eleven C. Zone commercial service center sub-district. This request is to approve a flex building. Interior found, the technical code check two point two commercial, chapter four point two development review. And site designer review section four point two point six hundred of the work area. Uh, written within chapter three design standards, it's a process of type three decision. Product of hearing will be the same as the previous two. Does anyone on the plan commission wish to dispose any conflict of interest, exported contact with bias? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge? Any conflict of interest, export date contact or bias of any commission? Okay, um, Nancy.
Yes. Thank you, Commission Chair Borisi. This one's going to be. A bit quicker. So this request is for a flex building that will be located on Yates Lane, east of Laurel Lane. The property is zone commercial service center sub-district for eleven condition. Approval that will need to be met. Either at the time of development or before a certificate of occupancy can be obtained. And for this uh, request, staff don't foresee any issues with any of the proposals. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll ask for the flex building.
Oh, thanks.
So.
I have a good idea because I know Joe, but I mean.
I, I, I don't know that it's so much knowing Joe, I think it's knowing that Joe's been a pork commissioner for so long and he's watched what they do. But basically, his proposal is a building, um, if you look at the, at the site plan. Um, they're proposing four, four bays with roll-up doors. Um, that would function, they're about fifteen hundred square feet apiece, and then four offices that are a little bit smaller that are just that in office, so. It's a, it's a metal building, um. It's. It's going to be Aaron Kearns, Kearns Brothers is building, and when we get to the end of Gates, Yates is getting extended a little further. Um, Kearns Brothers are building on the south side, uh, the Taylors are proposing to build on the north side. Um, it's the, the. I don't think we included it, but what they uh, provided in their packet, I think, as what the building was going to look like is really nice. It's a really clean looking building, it's a metal structure. Um, because we don't know what might go in any of these spaces, uh, we, we did estimate on parking. Um, we kind of applied the standard, the, the best we could figure out how to wander our way through the standard. And they know if they end up with somebody in one of these spaces that's going to use more parking spaces, they're going to have to address that and they have some. They have some mechanisms on the site to be able to add additional parking. So we're not concerned about how that would be met. Um, they also own significantly more property there, so if they needed to expand the parking area, they could. Um. We know that at least one of the spaces will be occupied by Double T Farming. And the rest of the work that Joe and Rod Taylor are doing these days. But like the, the bays is just going to be an expanse. Um, without interior walls. So that if somebody comes along and says, well, I want two bays, I want three thousand square feet and two bays. Well, then they would put the wall up to allow for a three thousand square foot bay with two roll-up doors. And rather than putting two bathrooms in, because they will be plumbed and ready to put a bathroom in every, in, in all four of those bay areas, they would only install one. So. We're trying to work with them to be as, to allow as much flexibility in what we require so that they can be flexible and seeking. Um, tenants for this commercial property, I will tell you, there's demand out there for this. Um, we talk to people regularly about, hey, I, I, I want to bring a business down and I, I don't know where to go, I would say, I. I wish I could help you. Now I can say, well, go talk to Double T Farming because they're going to be building a flex building and it just might be the right space for you. So what is a flex building?
So these are leases, it's going to be leasable property or leasable space?
It's all going to be leasable space. Again, one of them, we, as we understand it, will be occupied by Double T Farming and they're, what they're doing now with development.
Sure.
Yep.
And these are great for construction companies, mechanics, whatever.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, now, depends, some, some types of businesses that went in there may trigger specific requirements for that type of business. Because remember the auto body shop that we talked to last month? There will be some building permit requirements for that auto body shop because they're going to be painting in there. So again, if somebody came in and was going to do one of those kind of uses in one of these spaces, they may be held to additional building requirements. But from a planning perspective, they've met all the, they've checked all the boxes that we would have on the planning side.
There's going to be four?
Four bays and four offices for a total of eight leasable spaces.
It's a total square footage?
You're going to have to ask them, three, six, eighty-four hundred square feet, thank you, eighty-four hundred square feet. You didn't hear that from her, it just came in my mind and.
Anything else? Okay, uh. Sir, move me out again.
So I'm Angie Sullivan with Landways Two Ten West Maine and Echo, and we're excited to present this project. Uh, Carla read my notes, she pretty much went over everything that I was going to tell you. It's right next to TNT's mini story, if you're not quite familiar with where it's at, that's the only thing I would add it. Each office is about six hundred square feet, sixty by, uh, excuse me, thirty by twenty, fifteen by forty, and the. Bays are sixty by twenty-five hundred. Or twenty-five feet, um. She covered all of my notes and.
All the pictures.
Yeah, so I've got this.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a. I thought you guys have one of these also, I'll just kind of take this and show you this one here. Um, it'll be a metal building, it'll have a stone, um, Wayne Scott. It'll be landscaped, it'll be designed by somebody not me. Um, we've addressed the parking area, we've addressed. Um, there's a few points on there that I can't do on the drawing, but we will make sure that we, uh, address the seventeen, or the eleven points that are on the conditions for today's approvals. We have no concerns about it, any of those are all valid. Um. I think that's it, and it's up to you, she probably did it.
Yeah.
Uh, well, Double T Farming, we're, we're excited to try to make this happen and uh. Try to get another, uh, business going in, in the morning and. Appreciate your approval on this.
Joe, we need to name the address to the record.
Uh, Joe Taylor, seven eight five nine seven, Paul Smith. So yeah, it's a, it's on a. Out there by TNT store, we, we've owned the property for quite a few years now and, and uh. Now we're getting around to doing stuff on it.
Which whip is both? What's whip is both?
Uh, I've talked to her, she, she didn't have any concerns, uh. You know, we actually, you mentioned Kearns Brothers, we, we sold them four acres to put their building in a number of years ago. Uh, before we really got cranking on this. I, I think it's going to be a good compliment in there.
Absolutely.
Uh, the roads planned out for the most part and. I'm excited to see if I can get it done.
Then go around the block access.
Yes.
Well, I have the.
Yeah.
We're requiring a cul-de-sac at the end at the trimmers, just gravel for now, because we don't know where that road will go in the future. And we, there's more property that they can develop.
I just mean to get to Ted or to hit through uh, Yates.
Yes.
Yeah. Put that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta go on the loop road, they're wired. I know going in.
We just love those loop roads.
No, we're thankful for paint road that's going in there. Yeah, we're thankful for that.
Yeah.
For what the city did there.
Now going to work at like, five, thirty-five, twenty-five down there. Yeah, a year ago, it was horrible. Uh, any, any questions or comments for the event? And. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for the pictures.
I thought you guys had a rail, so.
Well, visual aids, yeah. We'll get those off then. All right, uh. Is there anyone who wants to speak against the application? Any neutral testimony? No rebuttal required, uh, public testimony portion is now closed. Issues addressed, uh, any questions? Concernments?
No.
This discussion. And the work of hosts. Oh, two pros, site design review, RVW twenty four dash zero 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 two three as presented.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. The site letter review as presented and second then.
Uh. Who said that, was it?
Yeah. The quiet one, I mean, yeah. Can we, uh, just do the whole?
Okay. Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightman?
Yes.
Commissioner Conwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen? Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Borisi?
Yes.
Sorry, Commission Chair Borisi. Motion passes.
Thank you very much for the patience.
Thank you. Thank you. Be grateful that.
Well, we don't have the time.
We want to leave discussion, Ivan.
Yes.
So there were two things, the very last two pages in that two hundred and ninety-seven page packet. Were for me. So last, no, two, two, thank you. I do have all three of those, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, because then I don't have to retain them. So, um. Two meetings ago, we talked about the meeting night.
Yeah.
And the, the decision was to shift to the third Thursday. I think Jennifer, you were the one person who missed that discussion.
Yeah. Ooh, I did.
You did. So, so. What you have in front of you is if you want to move forward, I mean, because I don't think everybody was here the night you had the discussion about the third Thursday. So if you want it, if you want to kind of revisit that, but. At this point in time, we do not have an application for June, correct?
No application.
So, so by shifting to Thursday, we actually were able to add the June meeting date back in. And we realigned July back to its third Thursday. So what this does is it shows Thursday dates through the fifteenth of May, or excuse me, Wednesday dates through May. And then Thursday dates from June to December. Um, but you need to adapt this, so I think you need to have a little more discussion about it and make sure that Thursday really works for everybody. And if it does, then adopt the schedule, if it doesn't, then we need to go back to the drawing board.
I'm good. I'm good. So we're going to Thursday night and, and it was six P M, I'm also.
Right, it was Thursday and it was at six, well, which we actually need to change that because it would be at six P M on there.
Uh, same. Box.
It doesn't work so good with my schedule because I work Thursdays. So I would just take that work.
They talk to the honest?
Right, I know. Right? It just means I have to change everybody's schedule in order to change my schedule.
Would it be up with you then?
No. It, it wouldn't matter whether it was early or late, I still have to change my schedule and. Management schedule and it would reflect some of all the employees.
Is there another day of the week that would work?
Well, Wednesdays weren't good for me, leaving it on Wednesdays would be less.
Okay.
It was, it just works better with my schedule.
One bet Tuesday. We've had a request to find a day other than Wednesday, so that's.
I think it's worked fine.
I think Tuesday just didn't work, so, well. Those. Yeah. But I'm not for it, so if you guys need to move to Tuesday, move to Tuesday. Well, is anyone else against Tuesday? I guess so, that.
And how does that really affect you, Sam?
Time.
Yeah, I'd like to find, I'd like to find.
Yeah, that's, it's a.
It's train. It's train eight.
I mean, like I said, I can do it on Thursdays, I just have to change things around. So.
Is, is anyone else, if there's just you two, well, it's a better day.
I don't have any, I just, I would rather do this at six versus seven.
Oh, yeah.
That's, I don't care what day of the week, not Friday, it's not Thursday.
Not Friday.
Only day.
Hard pass on Friday.
Yeah, okay, I don't care that it's on Thursdays, Thursdays are my Friday, but really isn't, so I'm fine with that, I just like to do it earlier because.
Yeah, Thursday is a good. Anyone else opposed to Thursday's session?
So we just ask that, that you take, you like consensus or something so that we can, we'll publish this calendar amendment.
I'm good for Thursday, I'm good, he's a hard pass on Tuesday.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll, I can adjust my schedule, it's only one, one day a week, or one day a month, so I should be able to adjust.
Thursday at six, right?
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday of the month, that's.
Third Thursday, six P M.
Okay, I know I will be here on this coming June, I will be, um, in the, in admin retreat, but I have to attend for.
There's no. So, and we're not, we're going to go ahead and let you know tonight that, that even though we shifted it and couldn't hold the June. Count funding commission meeting, we do not have any applications, so we're just going to go ahead and let you know now we're cancelling June.
Of course, we.
So she don't have to change her schedule yet.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's right. Oh, like I said, it's only one, one day, so.
Yeah. Okay, so perfect. Uh, Thursday, third, third, third? No, yes, third Thursday at six P M, starting in July, um, so July eighteenth. Uh, we'll, we'll get that published on the city calendar so that you go on, on there and see what that is. And that preserves everybody, nobody is like, oh, I can't make it work, okay. The last page is a document that. I would really encourage you to read, and you have a paper copy and it's the last piece of paper, and you could keep this if you wanted to, take it home and put it in that binder that I gave you all.
You think David binder?
Yeah.
I have three binders. As you say, I have enough.
So, so how this came about is Brandon said, could you just write something that kind of tells people who makes the decisions and how, why they make them and how it happens? And I said, well, there's this really good document that I have, it's like seven pages, I'm like, no, 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 short, Carla, short. So I wrote this and he said, okay, it's shorter. So. What I try to do is by example, take you through each of the different types of decisions that get made. So tonight, what you dealt with were three quasi judicial decisions or a type three decision. What I will tell you is right now, we were, we are in the comment period for a type two decision. For a food, uh, food truck on a piece of property along South Main. for a food, uh, food truck on a piece of property along South Main. So, um, as part of that type two, it did not have enough triggers to make it a type three decision, so we made the determination, it was this type two decision. It will include a similar use determination, because we don't allow food trucks, but we do allow restaurants. So we'll do a similar use determination as part of that. Um, and at this point in time, I don't see, uh, we've, we've mailed notice to the joint and property owners. So with a type two decision, notice goes to the joint and property owners and notice still goes to affected agencies. So we let the fire department know, we let the rec district know, and our internal folks and actually ODOT as well, because it's in the interchange area management plan. Um. I don't anticipate formal comment really from any of them. Uh, we've heard from Marty, he had some questions about making sure they, there's some life fire life stuff that as a food truck they have to comply with, he said, make sure they connect and we'll do that. But, um, houses, you know, if you have a residential zone piece of property and you're, you're either an individual wants to build your own on your own property or you're gonna, or developer owns a piece of property, it's subdivision, a house is a type one. It's a use allowed outright, and as long as you can show us that the house is within the meets the setback standards and you meet all the other development standards, we approve that fairly, fairly quickly. Um. In most decisions, once you leave planning, uh, you make a pit stop at Rolles' desk, um, and deal with utilities. Um. Pit stop, there was a little, did you catch that? Anyway, um, and then, and then when you leave his, uh, his desk, then you land in building and you deal with Glenn and Jackie. So, um, we've been talking a lot about internal procedure, we're trying to document how things happen, so I just thought I'd share this one with you. Um. The last one is a type four decision. Type four decisions come in front of this body and you make a recommendation to the city council. Type four decisions are where we, um, make law. So you're applying the law, we're, we're applying the law in type one, type two, and type three decisions. Type four decisions is we're making law, we're either amending current law or we're adopting new law. Um. Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's the crux of it. So anyway, if you've got any questions about that, feel free to reach out. Um, we're gonna continue to do things like that and, um, try to make them available to folks, so that we can try to answer questions, not only questions you might have, but questions that the general public might have. Um. In July, I, I anticipate we'll have somebody with an application before July, but if we don't, we have two applications that will come in front of you in July, we are making changes. Well, one of them, we're not actually making changes. In anticipation of changes, we are. We've asked the county to make a request for the city to adopt three documents in support of transit services, so I don't know if you've noticed, but the loop buses are driving around town. Uh, they have a route that goes out and goes past, um, gets near Bella Vista and it goes around on Coonsy, comes up Main, goes out towards the port area. Um, I don't know how many times a day they do that, but a couple. Uh, then they have two lines, I think, I think Boardman is the red line, and then they have a green line and a blue line. And they go to Hepner and catch the three south county cities and come back up, and they do that a couple times a day too. So we've asked them to submit, um, to the city for consider, for, to adopt as guidance, um. The plan that, that Luke developed around the Boardman for tomorrow circular. Um. Back in two thousand and eighteen, ODOT worked in collaboration with Marl County and Umatilla County and adopted every regional travel shed document. And it looks at in the region, so it reached all the way out and looked at data from Arlington to Pendleton and up into the Tri-Cities and reached out even a little bit to Le Grand, I don't know if it went to Baker City, I think it captured Le Grand. It tried to capture what the regional travel demand is specifically related to, um, commute patterns, commute in and out, and it was really eye opening for Boardman. Uh, it's amazing to me in two thousand and eighteen, and I don't think this trend has changed, how many people actually commute out of Boardman? And then with eighty-five hundred jobs at the Port tomorrow, and less than five thousand people living in Boardman, we know people are commuting in.
That would have been worse, it had to been, because we built five hundred new places to live since then, which, which I'm assuming some people here.
Yes.
So it's probably not as bad as it used to be.
It may not be as bad, but that's, that's the most we said.
Yeah. Committee of the Department of Energy was too used outside, so.
Yeah, and then the third document that we asked them to submit is a fairly new document. Um, the county is required to do a, um, countywide coordinated human services plan. And it, it really is done in support of their dial ride, although in this most recent one, I think they, they also kinda tried to address general, general transit in it. So we're gonna put those three documents in front of you, um, and then it'll go in front of the city council to adopt those as reference documents to support our T S P update that will get, get kicked off this fall, um, to help facilitate the transit component of our T S P update. The T S P currently has nothing in it relative to transit, because in two thousand and one, there was no transit. Um, it does mention, uh, the Greyhound, but Greyhound actually doesn't stop in Marl County anymore, stops out at Stanfield. So, um, we need to make a lot of changes to our T S P, so that's in anticipation of our T S P. And then the other part, the other thing that will be in front of you is we have the downtown development plan, which also was adopted in two thousand and one. And it actually has a city preferred design standard that has a pedestrian path walking down the middle of Main Street going north and south. And ODOT never liked it, the city adopted it anyway, but the city today was, there's no way we're gonna build a main street with a pedestrian path walking down the middle of Main Street, it just, it's like inviting trouble. So, um, we are gonna be amending that document, and we're gonna take that design standard out. We're probably gonna remove all of the design standards that are pictured in there. And then we're gonna update, there's a, one of the commercial districts is, is shown in that plan where it's not the current version. So we're gonna make a couple of changes to that document, so that is also legislative, that's a change in that document. So both of those are quasi, or excuse me, legislative actions, so they'll come in front of you and you'll do a recommendation to the council to adopt those. So I'm hoping that it's all fairly straightforward and not a whole lot of questions about all of that. Um, but if, if the introduction tonight raises any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. Um, because there's a fair amount of reading with at least, well, actually, there's a fair amount of reading with both of those, we'll try to get that packet out to you early. Yeah. And, and it, um. Did it work to have, because the packet was so big, did it work to have Arida deliver those to you all? Did you all get them?
I do.
Uh, yeah.
Well, Tony delivered yours. But with a new code enforcement officer, so Jose is gonna be moving and becoming a building inspector. Um, that's been in the works for quite a while, and so we recently recruited and hired a new code enforcement officer, her name is Arida Campos. And yes, she is the sister of Luis, who's worked here for a while, hi. Um, she's doing great. Um, and on Friday, I was like, would you just, here's the names, here's the addresses, would you deliver to these folks?
My address is new, so I need to make sure, I had to go to my old house to get it.
Oh, okay, yes, it's, yes, if anytime your address or anything changes, do let us know, so we can keep those records updated.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll probably do the same thing for the July packet, is try to get it to you early. Um, and again, I'm thinking even more than a week early, because there's gonna be a fair amount of reading in them.
I'll email you if I manage tomorrow. And there's another thing too, um. It, I, I know it's like, I wanna leave more than anybody, but I was told in the review that we were to have separate emails for the city.
Yeah, so we need to.
Our work ones, somebody can subpoena.
Yeah.
But I keep getting emails at my work.
Oh, well, okay, you should be sending those to her private email address. Not her work, not her school district address.
Because I don't.
The one I have is your working email, the one I've been messaging you?
Getting, or I think it's not from you, maybe from, um, Amanda.
Oh, okay, because I emailed her to her personal.
Okay.
I think you do, but I keep getting them, but I just wonder, because I don't want it to be.
Yeah, so.
Or something.
So we need, we've had a real shift in our, um, I T.
Okay.
Um. And I think we finally are resolving the frustrations and issues that we've been having. So for you, we also need to get David's, um, city email address set up, and we need to get Regna set up. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
I don't think you do.
I didn't know.
It's been disabled. Yes. If it wasn't, it should have been.
You go to my. I've never checked it. Or my brotherly.
Okay, so. So you will all, you all do. We, you all do receive monthly emails at that city email address, that is where we are emailing our packet. So if you are not connected to get that, and I know a couple of you aren't, we need to connect you, and yes, you do need to check that periodically. Now, if I need to set up a system where we're calling you to tell you to check that city email, we can do that.
No, I just, I get it through my personal or my work, my company email, uh, one of the two I get it from here every month. So, so I've never considered the, the city email, I didn't, I had, it comes to my own email.
Personal, I just didn't.
And I don't care, it doesn't matter, maybe it comes to my company.
Well, but the city, the city doesn't want to be using your personal email for the reasons that Jamie just identified. We don't, we want to be sending it to you at a city email address. So it's frustrating, I know, it's as frustrating on my side to do that as it is on your side, but it is a protection for both parties.
Yeah, and I, it's a protection I'd like to have, yeah.
Yeah, so we do need to work through some I T issues with a couple of you, but you should be receiving things there. And I would just encourage you, you know, if you've got a, you know, if you want, uh, here's one thing we could also do with that, is we can send you, um, if you wanted, we can send you calendar invites through that as well, although.
Or reminders.
And we can also send you meeting reminders to there as well, so, I mean, there's more than one way. But we would like to be able to just know that all of you are receiving the emails through your city email system. Yeah. Pardon?
I am.
I, I know you are, and I know Sam is, and I know Jennifer is, it's the rest of you, I'm less.
I don't even know what it is.
So we'll, okay, we'll add you to the list, we'll make sure that I T connects with Jamie, David, Regna, and Mike.
Okay.
Perfect.
I look like I'm not optimistic.
It's, if you have a. It's a web based, it's a web based action, I mean, you, you basically, you go to the, you, you can save on your, so.
No, I know how, I just, the guy I have was supposed to call.
Well, like I said, we've had, we've had some issues with I T, and I think we finally got them resolved.
It's easy.
Eighty-five percent of the way there?
We're there, we're all good.
Yes.
All I have to do is, yeah, that's it, I can add to my other one, so they all, I always hit all of them.
It's Colonel and.
Colonel, that's all I need.
I don't think there's any public comment.
Huh? No, good. Well, but I've always gotten through the. Any comments? Nope.
You know, you, you guys can all just drop, if you don't wanna keep your packets, just drop it on the table over there, we'll recycle.
No, but I never hear.